All right, welcome to the next meeting of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. Can we all rise for the place of allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
As you can see, President Faub is out today because of illness, as well as Superintendent Teresa Weather O'Neal, but absent of that, if you could take the role, please, Ms. Grant.
All right, Ms. Shaki.
Present.
Ms. Slade is excused. Dr. Baker?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Here.
Ms. Grant present. Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Reverend Matthias?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Present.
And President Faub is excused.
Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Support.
All right, Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And President Faub is excused.
Thank you. Well, Dr. Gorman, I see you have a great addition to our board tonight. We have one absent, but I believe we have Honor Calderon, is that correct?
Yes.
Great, great. I don't know, Dr. Gorman, would you like to give us any background on her?
Absolutely. Vice President Ross, members of our Board of Education, I would like to introduce you to one of our new student representatives this evening, Honor Calderon. We have two student representatives this year, as we usually do. This year, our student representatives are from Union High School and Ottawa Hills High School. Bakir Mohammed is from Ottawa Hills High School. He will be joining us next time. But since the two individuals were appointed last week, I would like to introduce both at this time and just read their bios. Bakir Mohammed is a senior at Ottawa Hills High School, where he is the Vice President of the National Honor Society. He has a grade point average of 3.56. Bakir is the youngest of 12 children in his family. After high school, Bakir plans to attend the University of Michigan to study secondary education with a double major in English and mathematics. Teaching is something that he has always wanted to do since he was a young child, and our hope is that he comes back to the Grand Rapids Public Schools after the University of Michigan. In his spare time, Bakir is a musician and also enjoys skateboarding. Here with us this evening is Honor Calderon. Honor is a senior at Union High School and is a member of the National Honor Society. He has a weighted grade point average of 4.22. Honor came to the United States three and a half years ago, and he could not speak English three and a half years ago. He started in the newcomers program at Union High School, and at the newcomers program at Union High School, and after about a month, he began taking most of his classes in the comprehensive high school at Union. Honor is now currently ranked number one in his class, which means he is on pace to become the valedictorian, and he has 48 college credits. So he will go into college almost as a junior and with not a whole lot of debt. After high school, Honor plans to attend college to study biomedical science and eventually become a physician's assistant. In his spare time, Honor enjoys volunteering at organizations such as Kids Food Basket and Clinica Santa Maria. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Honor Calderon. And at this time, Honor, do you have a few words?
Yeah, of course. Good evening, everyone. Well, first of all, being selected as one of the student representatives is both a huge responsibility and a great honor. I would like to thank my mom, who was here tonight, for always supporting me, as well as Dr. Nelson, and Dr. Gorman for the interview. And yes, this is going to be definitely a great opportunity to demonstrate to the GRPS district, the GRPS students, that our voice is actually being heard and not ignored. And this will be definitely be, this is going to be definitely a great opportunity to learn a lot of things about the Board of Education. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Grant, do you have any public comment cards for board agenda items?
I do not.
All right, great. Well, we will move on to the secretary's report.
Yes. A quick update on the board committee meeting schedule. The Academic Achievement Committee will meet on Tuesday, October 16th, at 9:00 a.m. in the auditorium of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Administration Building. Finance Committee will meet on Monday, October 22nd, at 4:00 p.m. in the auditorium of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Administration Building. There will be a special board meeting following the Finance Committee to present on the 2017 financial audit. The City Board Liaison Committee will meet on Wednesday, October 31st, at 1:30 p.m. in Room 101 of the Administration Building. School Choice Expo and Family Harvest Festival is happening on Thursday, October 18th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Gerald R. Ford Academic Center. Learn more about school choices, meet staff, check out the new and expanded theme schools and centers of innovation. On October 22nd, 2018, there will be no school on that Monday, that's a reminder. Also, please join local leaders by attending the To College Through College Summit on Wednesday, October 17th, at Davenport University in the WA Lettinga Main Campus. By attending, you will be uplifted by the stories of 1,302 students that have been served and empowered the Grand Rapids community in helping students to and through college. Learn how you can alleviate a need, fill a gap, and help sustain this work for our Grand Rapids students. TCTC is a community collaboration between the City of Grand Rapids, the Grand Rapids Public Schools, higher education, and community-based programs. For more information, contact the T2C Studio Coordinator, Shayla Willis, at swillis@grcity.us, or call 616-988-5549. Lastly, the Grand Rapids Housing Commission, Affordable Housing for West Michigan waiting list is open up. Affordable Housing for West Michigan will accept new applicants to their Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program from 12:00 a.m. November 5th through 11:59 p.m. on November 19th. You can visit www.grhousing.org for more information.
Thank you very much. Committee Chair update, can we make an adjustment in the minutes, though? We have this title, Ad Hoc Superintendent Search Committee. Can we make that Ad Hoc Superintendent Transition Planning Committee? And I guess I just specify the difference because it's not the task of that ad hoc committee to search for the next superintendent, it's that task of the ad hoc committee to determine how we will transition into the next superintendent, what that process of searching or identifying will be. So just a point of clarification. Dr. Baker?
Yes, we, the Transition Planning Committee, and basically last week, when we met in our work session, and this was reported in the press as well, that we decided that although we have an election coming up, we don't know for sure who the, who the board members will be that will choose the superintendent. That board won't be seated until January. We did think that if we waited until January, we were letting a lot of time go, so we, we created this ad hoc committee to come up with a plan of introducing information to the board and to perspective and board members-elect in November on what the process can be and how other districts have gone about it. So we met today, Ms. Grant, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Shaki, and myself. We reviewed minutes from when we did this seven years ago. That process turned out, even though the community had different ways, we ended up with a pretty good outcome. But this time, we want to make sure we include the community and then are true to what we ask of the community and what we, the expectations that we give to the community. So on November 12th, we will invite representatives from the Michigan Association of School Boards, the Kent Intermediate School District, as well as some area school districts and the, and GRCC to perhaps come and share their experiences with searching and transitioning into new leaders in those places. And so that way, the board, and then at that time, we'll have board members-elect. So the board members-elect will be invited to come to that November 12th work session and hear about what processes we can do. It'll be a question and answer opportunity, and the way we feel really comfortable with what decision to do. That is all this committee was charged to do. And so, and what we, what often hap, mostly happens with the board is that we come together and decide the work that other people do. So Julie Anderson tomorrow will begin working with, contacting people and, and working with us to, to host that meet, that meeting. But we will plan for sure on November 12th at 4:30, there'll be a session beginning that introduces us to the procedures that we should take for the future.
All right, thank you. Any other committee members, anything to add to Mr. Baker's summary? All right. Well, thank you very much. Next, we have us a report out on the CUBE Annual Conference, which I had the pleasure of attending a couple of weeks ago. And the CUBE, for those who don't know, is a subset of the National Association of School Boards. CUBE is accounts for urban boards of education in particular, so it's a subset of NSBA that focuses on urban school districts, small, medium, and large. And the theme of this year's conference was, this is last year's thing, a lot of equitable conversations going on. The sessions that I attended were then with parent engagement. Particularly, there is something called academic-parent teacher teams out of the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, where it's sort of a, I hesitate to say cohort-based parent-teacher conference, but they're group-based parent-teacher conferences where groups of parents for a particular classroom attend multiple conferences together throughout the school year. The parents are shared classroom data, I'm assuming, well, I'm not assuming, but the question was asked, obviously, about privacy and whatnot. So they're given data on the classroom as far as percentage of students on grade level, percentage of students, what they got on this test, that test, and, and things of that nature. And the individual parent, of course, is given data on his or her child, so they can see in relation to the classroom where their child falls. But then also, throughout the year, those parents are also given resources, academic resources, to help fill in the gaps, if you would, to help their child at least increase or reach his or her academic goals. And I thought that was just a pretty intriguing sort of support, sort of situation that they built with the parent-teacher conference. And they actually, though, in, in Ohio, there's some legislation that was a little unclear to me at the time, but at the end of the day, though, they have reported that this legislation has almost mandated the district to increase contact time with, with parents. So, so that was the impetus behind them going this route. And there's a sort of a group sort of thing that, that 91.6% of their parents have been engaged with the district in some capacity. Now, I did ask specifically that 91%, 91% is not all face-to-face contacts, and their data, they are also including phone calls and things of that nature. So it's not all NC conferences, but the broad piece was this sort of collective conference format, if you would, that may have, may, maybe worth looking to at some other point. Also attended one on school safety, which frankly wound up becoming a product pitch, really. The, the title got me, but really what it was, it's an organization called Schools 21, 21st Century, 21st Century Safe Schools. But really what it was, it was amalgamation of a few different, a bunch of different companies that have come under this umbrella of, they call it school specialty. Everything from desks, chairs, lesson planning, security measures for doors, and a whole variety of things that go into, as they say, building a safe school. So really what it was, it was, really ended up in a pitch to try to get districts to come on board to adopt a wide variety of their resources, which they say will make their school environment a bit safer. I guess, as you can tell, I was a bit skeptical, but I did sit through it and do have some information if anyone is interested on that. But I think in that regard, Dr. Johnson, excuse me, Larry Johnson, we know is one of the national leaders in that regard, and thus far, I've been trusting his expertise in that area. And then another workshop was in regards to best practices and superintendent evaluations, and really as vice president, since that being one of the things that, that has been my charge the past couple of years, I was really curious to see what some of these best practices were. And in the end, as we are doing things here with our, our process and our rubric, that apparently, according to the conference presenters at this particular workshop, that's in line with best practices. That was particularly, those folks were from the Nashville School District, and they do things very similar. They use their strategic plan, which in our case would be our transformation plan, to identify primary areas or goals for evaluation. They then develop the rubric to assess and obtain scores to establish the level of effectiveness, which really mirrors, obviously, what we do here. They did also, when they put their process together, have some technical assistance from the Tennessee School Board Association. Of course, our technical assistance is from the Michigan Association of School Administrators. So really, nothing earth-shattering to report there, other than sort of a confidence that we are in line with some national best practices. And another piece I found interesting was a workshop on equity mindfulness and restorative practices, where in, where was, that was in Baltimore, where they began to implement concepts of mindfulness to help curb out-of-school suspensions, and sort of weaving mindfulness and restorative practices together, where victim and offender are going through, I guess, sessions of mindfulness. And those who aren't familiar with mindfulness, it's, it's relaxation techniques, I guess, is to, to put it simply. But, but according to them there, they have had a reduced out-of-school suspensions for boys of color in particular, by adopting this practice, if you would. And I think those were probably the highlights. Another highlight, I guess I would share, Ms. Shaki and I talked before about, Ms. Shaki has on her radar in particular, about the transitioning piece for the onboarding process, I should say. And I did get a chance to speak to a vendor who espouses they specialize in helping school districts with their onboarding process. So I did have some conversation with this person, and we can maybe talk a little bit more about that later, if you're interested as well. So. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Light's on after school.
Vice President Ross and members of our Board of Education, I would like to ask Mr. Mal Atkins and Ms. Rosie Holmes to please come forward.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, Vice President Ross, and board members. I'd like to introduce today Rosie Holmes. Rosie is our Director of the Office of Extended Learning, for I think, two years, two years now, going on year two. And she's going to talk about tonight is the Light's On After School event.
Good evening to the Board of Education, Dr. Gorman. Light's On After School is the only nationwide event celebrating after-school programs and their important roles in the lives of our children, our community, and our families. It's an opportunity for us to rally around our partners to keep our children safe, invest them in learning, and to have fun in working with families. Every October, over 1 million families come together to celebrate the after-school program, and it comprises about 8,000 events nationwide. We are excited to continue our partnership with the YMCA, United Methodist Community House, and Campfire West Michigan to celebrate Light's On After School. Grand Rapids Public Schools 21st Century Community Programs, otherwise known as LUP, is proud to have all 23 sites that would be participating during the month of October. Caesar Chavez Elementary School has been selected as the host site for our Light's On After School program. This celebration will occur on Tuesday, October 23rd, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. There will be lots of fun activities. We're going to have guest speakers from the community, as well as the district, and there will be refreshments. And we invite each and every one of you to come and celebrate in this activity with us. Thank you.
Well, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
We do have two action items. The first is regarding the RFP that was drafted, Request for Proposals for Community Engagement, regarding the superintendent candidate profile. This is a part of what Dr. Baker referred to earlier. I know there have been a couple of minor edits to the document. Did everyone receive the most recent document from this afternoon? I can read it if, if that would help.
Yeah, can you read it? Also, I believe that the, it should, even the title of, of this should change.
Okay.
To, to reflect that. But if you read it, it'll be.
Well, for, there is going to be a RFP released, a Request for Proposals for Grand Rapids Public School Board for Stakeholder Engagement to Inform the Board on Community Priorities in Preparation for Leadership Transition. The Grand Rapids Board of Education is soliciting proposals from interested parties to conduct a stakeholder community engagement process to aid them in identifying community priorities. These proposals should specify, excuse me, should specifically address the following issues. The background and qualifications of the firm, experience in conducting engagement process for superintendent or similar executive position candidate profiles, description of the proposed process and deliverables, references, and we're asking that any interested and qualified party submit a proposal by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, October 29th via email in order to be considered. The board will consider proposals and conduct interviews for selected RFPs at a work session of the board on November 12th at 4:30 p.m. We're asking that proposals be sent in PDF format with a designated subject line to julieanderson@andersonju@grps.org. So that is the language that we have now for the RFP. And Dr. Baker, though, you have a comment as far as the title?
Just that we're, that it's, I guess, the community priorities profile, rather than...
Okay, gotcha.
So this does not, this is a separate item from what I discussed earlier in terms of the MASP and others that we invite. These would be persons that would do a study of community priorities for use in however we choose to do a search in the future.
Gotcha. Yes. Okay, great clarification. Any comments or questions about the RFP language? If not, do we have anyone who'd like to make a motion?
So moved.
Any support?
Support.
Thank you.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And President Faub is excused.
And we have a second action item regarding the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center Board of Directors' appointment. Would anyone, can I get a motion for that appointment?
I make an emotion to support this appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Dr. Gorman, could you explain what the relationship is between us and this entity? So I have Sharon Pitts come forward, please.
Good evening. So, Dr. Baker, tell me your question.
I just, I just wanted to, what the relationship is, because people always are kind of confused. What is the relationship with Discovery Center to GRPS, and then why do we get to appoint their board members?
Okay. GRPS is the authorizer for this charter school. It is our only one, and as a result of that, the law requires the board to actually appoint the board members, the Board of Directors, they're called, for the charter school. And so, last year, you all, when the charter, their charter was renewed in 2017, you also passed a resolution that outlined certain criteria that had to be met for the process for appointing a Board of Director for the charter schools. So I did vet that, and I ensured that they did meet the requirements. Although we are not a part of the selection process, the charter school actually does that, but it did meet the requirements that you all set out in your resolution.
Thank you.
Why do we do this? What's happened for us?
In terms of the...
What benefit do we receive from chartering a school?
Oh.
Well, this particular school predates probably most of the people in the room. So this was a decision made decades ago, so. Mr. Helm, bring, bring some history in as well. Thank you, Ms. Pitts.
This is where you gotta be prepared for anything that comes your way, right? So the history, this actually is, was one of our first authorized charter schools. It dates back to the, the mid-'90s, when the advent of charter schools first came to Michigan. At that time, it was somewhat unique in the sense that public school districts could authorize charter schools, but they had to be done with the teachers' union, within the teachers' union contract. And so, we've had this longstanding relationship where, up until somewhat recently, the Child Discovery Center has really kind of been a standalone island. I mean, they are their own separate local education authority. So their test scores, their enrollment, their grad rates, everything does not count to GRPS. And so, what we did most recently with the MOU was begin to look at how do we strengthen that relationship and bring us closer together. And it does beg the question, certainly, what the future could look like, but right now, we have not had that, the closest relationship. It's been on and off a little bit, and in this case, that's a broader policy question for the board at some point in the future. But having that opportunity for us to understand how we can support them more, we can build that relationship, which is, most of the students that graduate from Child Discovery do come to Grand Rapids Public Schools in sixth grade, and so there's some real opportunity for us to explore what the future may look like.
But the teachers there are...
They are all GREA members.
They're all under our, our contract?
That's correct.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. I would just add one other thing, is that if you might recall, when we created the Centers of Innovation, that was when there was another group that was coming to town that was looking to model and open a new charter school. And we were saying, no, we really think that we need to do it within the district. And so we created a process by which those, those individuals or those organizations, if they want to have some charter-like qualities, but it's done within our district for the benefit of the whole, not just those fortunate few, we have that process. And that's certainly a conversation that's probably worth continuing.
But this is not a for-profit, this is...
This is not a for-profit. It's authorized by us. So there's, there's no charter management firm. The principal is also the superintendent and the CEO of the organization.
Where's the building?
It's the old Vandenberg Creative Arts Academy, right there by Mary Freebed.
Wealthy.
Thank you, sir.
But I do applaud you for asking, because we've been vigilant. We used, we, when I was first on the board, there were often different arrangements requested for us to consider charter schools, and we were always adamantly opposed. The Centers of Innovation gets rid of the whole need for it. So, and I think that it's been a good model. But I would say that Child Discovery Center, because unlike other schools, they, they end up being steered back to GRPS rather, so it's really nice.
That's what I wondered before, but I, I wondered if there was, I was concerned about our relationship in terms of the teachers and if they were our teachers.
Great question.
Are we welcome to visit? What, how does that work?
I would think so.
Probably have to arrange it.
Yeah, just... All right. Can you go ahead and call the vote, Ms. Grant, please?
Yes. Ms. Shaki?
Sorry, was there a motion?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Slade is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And President Faub is excused.
All right, now we have our consent agenda grouping. Is there a motion for that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda grouping.
Second.
All right, Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Ms. Grant, do we have any cards for public comment non-agenda items?
We do not.
All right, well, Dr. Gorman, superintendent comments?
No comment.
Okay. Mr. Matthias?
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
I'd just like to extend our hearty welcome. I know we give him an applause, but quite an amazing young man that we have across the aisle here. And, and certainly want to tell you bienvenido and, and welcome.
Yeah, I just want to echo that welcome, Honor. It's just a pleasure to be serving alongside you, and I hope that you will have a voice for the students, because it is so important. That is why we sit here. You are one of my children now, and it's just such an honor to have you. And then to your mother as well, thank you so much for sharing him with us and letting him serve. We are so grateful he's here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker?
I'll also extend this. I mean, I'm extra proud, because you've been in the PROMESA program, which gave you some of those 48 hours of credit, but anyway.
I gave, I think you still have it too.
Well, he earned them, so anyways, fantastic, and it's really quite an accomplishment to work so hard and to achieve so much so quickly. And with that also, said, I do want to just encourage people to participate in the To College Through College Summit on Wednesday morning at Davenport, which is about providing community-based resources to help our students, Grand Rapids Public School graduates, move on to college and have our, our community not forget them once they graduate. So, that's it.
Ms. Downs, Lewis?
Yes, we could go Friday. I attended the annual Challenge Scholar Stakeholder Meeting, and there was a panel of teachers and students and parents and other stakeholders who reported out on their experiences. And one thing they all shared was that they, the students were, according to the teachers, the parents, and the students themselves, that all of the kids are working a lot harder, that they have this goal in mind, that they're going to be able to go to college. So it's a very positive thing as far as the kids and being attracted to, to earn their scholarships to college. And at the Harrison Park in Westwood, they work on attendance there, especially because they know if they can get kids into good habits of attending school on a regular basis, they'll probably be more successful. So they have at least 70% of those kids in that middle school that has at least 95% attendance rate, which is really wonderful. So I'm very proud of our association with them, and I am also very proud of the shun man over here, and I'm so glad he's going to be here with us, because his little brother is a challenge scholar.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Just welcome, welcome, Honor. We're really excited to have you with us and really proud to have you be a student in our district.
Thank you.
All right, let's just get out your hats and gloves and get ready. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.